Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Miller, could you please call the roll?
Chairman DiMaria?
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht?
Here.
Mr. Bushnell?
Here.
Mrs. Kiefer?
Mrs. Seberg?
Here.
Mrs. Sebeski? Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Ms. Maddock?
Here.
It's nice to hear Ms. Seberg and Ms. Alonso, welcome. My computer's not up yet, so I'm going to use this one. Dr. McGorick, are there additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we have a personnel addendum to be added to the consent agenda, and then we have student transfers and student administrative fees to be added to the action agenda.
Thank you. And we don't have any announcements or spotlights unless we're spotlighting these guys?
No, we do not.
Okay. Committee reports, if there are any committee reports. Okay. Now, I'll pan down. Board member comments. Ms. Alonso, we're going to start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I don't have anything to say right now, but I just want to say that I'm very excited to be here because it's my first meeting as a school board representative, and I'm very excited to start my senior year.
Even more excited to have you, blue hair and all. Ms. Maddock?
Thank you. I actually have a little bit to say tonight. If a few of you may know, but some of you may not, I spent the most of the summer, the month of, all of July, at the University of Bradford. There I was part of Governor's School for Humanities, and it was an excellent month. It was such an amazing opportunity. It was like the best month of my life. I enjoyed every single second of it. I made great relationships with not only like friends and professors there, but I learned so much. It was not more about like the classes I took, but just the experiences that I learned from. And on the very first day where we were all nervous because we didn't know anybody, but the doctor who was in charge of the program got up and talked to us, and he said something that I found really powerful and kind of like how I want to live by, just, and I really want, I want to share with you guys. So he talked about how a lot of times in the education system today, what we're really doing is we're working for a degree, towards a degree, just to earning something. We're just learning just to have a degree to go off of and get a job. And he is not very fond of that. He believes that learning should be about learning and just educating yourself and to better yourself. And so what he said is that today, we're working towards a degree, so we're just connecting the one, two, three, four, five dots that we need just to get the credits, just to graduate from whatever program we're in. And he said if you're doing that, you're going to make a stick figure. But if you're learning to better yourself and really have more knowledge, you're going to go here and here and here, and you're going to go all over the place. You're going to do something in this area, in this field, and if you do it that way, you're not going to make a stick figure, you're going to make a Mona Lisa. So I really like that, and I think that's how everybody should live by, and not just learning to finish something and to get through the day, but learn because you know you're going to better yourself. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope you had a good time in class.
I did, thank you.
Ms. Seberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to say thank you to the board, the opportunity to serve in this way. Thank you to the staff for the warm welcome and the ongoing assistance as I orient to this new role. I wanted to say good luck to all the students that are trying out for fall sports and to the marching band that is having band camp last week and this week. Thank you to the coaches and their directors that guide them and the boosters that help support them. A reminder, drink lots of water while you're out there on the field. And I was able to attend my first Osborne graduation last night, so congratulations to the 2016 summer graduates of Osborne. Finally, last but not least, I'd like to thank my family and for the community that has helped prepare me for this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. No comments, sir.
The Olympics are on. Mr. Bushnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your comments on Governor's School remind me that there are a lot of learning and enrichment activities that take place during the summer, and that many of our students stay very busy doing some of the most valuable experiences that they will have. The variety of Governor's Schools that's available to our high school students is incredible. It covers all subject matter, and each of them is an in-depth opportunity to learn and to network with other students and to be exposed to higher education. Between the Governor's Schools, the various Governor's Schools, the residence Governor's Schools, and the Boys and Girls State Experiences, experiences in leadership, experiences that are offered, and, you know, this is the time to just remind people that during the year is when you apply for those things, and that, you know, next summer is a great opportunity that awaits, but you have to apply to have the opportunity. And I also wanted to just personally welcome the two new members. It's, you know, the cycle of life that takes place on a school board is amazing, and the way that new members come, old members sometimes go, as I'm about to. It's been probably too long that I haven't gone, but we'll see. It just is so refreshing to get new perspectives, to see new faces, and we look forward to sharing your ideas and your perspectives. And if you have ideas, don't be afraid to say, gee, I was thinking this, because you are the only one with your perspective, and you bring a refreshing new attitude to the table, and we grow from having both of you be here. So, thank you, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, sir. You're not very, you're not wrong very often, but you haven't stayed too long.
Thank you.
Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, sir. As Ms. Seberg said, congratulations to last night's graduates from Osborne. I think again, the community coming together. Tim, you did a great job with your speech with them. Thirteen unique stories, thirteen children who, we took the effort, they took the effort, and they received their diploma, and they can go out and contribute to Manassas or to better themselves. And it's a fantastic thing, and really supporting that delegate Miller was even there. So again, it just speaks to our sense of community here in Manassas. We've all got a card for the Legislative Advocacy Conference from V S B A middle of September. I will be moderating that. And finally, you also have a letter, and I just want to thank this board. I have been nominated to be president-elect of V S B A. Of course, to accept that honor, I do have to win an election in November, but I do appreciate the support I've had from this board over the years.
Thank you, sir.
Could I just interject?
Sure, go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, but...
After 26 years, you've got to let him do what he wants to do.
A little more than that, but... I just wanted to say that if you don't know, that Mr. Albrecht spends a good deal of time volunteering to serve on a lot of state committees, and his actions on the V S B A are another way that this board is enriched and is exposed to new ideas and to new ways of doing things. And that he spends as much time committed to that board as he does to this one. And I thank you for your service, and I'm just amazed at how much you do put into this, and it's exciting to think that V S B A has the opportunity to have you in a leadership role.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Last night's graduation, and that's exactly what it was, was graduation. Those 13 kids have done a wonderful job, as has the staff getting to that point, and I'm glad we were there to celebrate with them. Last week, we had the national night out. It was very nice to see so many people out and celebrating our community. Manassas is a great place to be, and I'm quite thrilled to be here that we can continue to do those things throughout the summer, not just the school year. And that's all I've got, so we're going to continue on. To citizens' comments, I don't have anybody signed up. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Okay. Mr. Williams, thanks you. The consent agenda.
Adoption of the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Did you second that, or was that your computer?
That's my computer talking.
I'm ashamed, my Mr. Bushnell said to my Mr. Williams that the school board, the City of Manassas, adopt the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye carries...
Five.
Five, zero. And we will move on to discussion agenda. Finance and operations, lead water, I was going to say need, lead water testing.
Good evening, Chairman DiMaria, Madam Superintendent, school board members. The health and safety of our students is always our number one priority. As a result of the high levels of lead found in the water systems in Flint, Michigan and Washington, D.C., our superintendent decided to be proactive and test the drinking water at all of our schools for lead to determine if they meet the safe standards as determined by the Environmental Protection Agency. I say proactive since the Virginia Department of Health exempts public school divisions from water testing if they receive water, if they receive water from a public water system. Ms. Lee, can you keep going? So when we, Virginia, so M C P S also followed the EPA's three Ts process as far as training, testing, and telling. And the telling is our communication to the public, and that's something that we're starting tonight, and we will have a press release in the morning, and there'll be a section on the website to also provide as much information as possible. Let's go to the next screen. Our partners that we had in this process were Darren Branch from the Manassas City Public Works, Dr. Ashner from the Prince William Health Department and her team, and we also were in contact and head support from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, Lisa Reagan. Next screen, please. So to give you sort of a timeline of the events that took place, you'll see that we just started, lasted approximately a month, maybe a little longer, from May 25th, where we met with the city of Manassas to discuss our plan, how we wanted to coordinate this effort, to actually taking the test on June the 10th, and the results coming back in. We did do some retesting, and we'll explain that later on June 22nd. And then we, finally, we met on July the 5th with the Prince William Health District, Health Department, to talk about our methodology, our results, and what they thought about them. They helped us evaluate what we had done and our results, and they also gave us guidance on how to communicate these results to our citizens. So June the 10th, in conjunction with the city, we took 98 samples, were taken throughout the school division. They were of all of our water fountains, except for the one at Osborne that was damaged and out of service at the time, all of our kitchens, all of our nursing stations, and we took a random sample of all of the kindergarten classrooms. The bubblers or their fountains within the, within each classroom so that children can get a drink of water. So those were, that was the sample size. We were looking, trying to make it as inclusive as possible of all areas where drinking, children could be exposed to having drinking water. Next slide, please. So of the, of the 98 tests, 97 of them, or 99 percent of them came back within the EPA Safe Maximum Standard Limit, which is 20 parts per billion. 95 of them tested with less than four parts per billion. Two tested 16 parts per billion, and one, one was tested over the standard, which was at 20 parts per billion. So June 22nd, we took those three samples, the two that were 16, and the one that was above 20, and we did a retest to make sure that we were not receiving false positives for those devices. During that period of time, between the June 22nd and the 28th, all of those devices, those three devices were taken out of service so that no one would be able to get water from them. On June the 28th, we received the results from those retesting at all samples, all samples that came back below the EPA Safe Standard of 20 parts per billion. As a proactive measure, though, we went out and took all of those three devices out of service and replaced them. Even though they fell within EPA standard, we felt that we should go beyond what was required and replace all of those devices, so those repairs have been completed. So July the 5th, we met with our team, which is our facilities director, Russ Hilton, our public relations officer, Al Rafford, myself met with our Manassas City partners and with the Prince William team. Like I said, we went over our sample methodology, our testing procedures. By the way, the testing procedure, there was a strict rule of chain of custody of these, of these water samples, and they were sent to an independent laboratory in Prince William County. And we talked about our results and how we needed to have a coordinated effort between the Manassas City and us on how they test their water that they provide to us and the testing that we do, that we have done within the school division, how we were going to be as transparent as possible to get the information out to the public. Next slide, please. So we are, we are one of the first, if not the first, in the region to have ever, who've conducted these types of tests. And we were pleased that the Prince William County Health Department commended us for our process. They thought we did a wonderful, very thorough job, and they are going to use our process as a model to help other school divisions throughout the region when they begin to, if they do this. This process was also shared with the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments and to be used by them also as a model going forward for other, other school divisions and other So that's our report for tonight. Are there any questions, concerns, comments?
Anyone?
I'd just like to thank staff for doing this because you said you were proactive, and I agree. Just yesterday, there were more reports on the effects in various parts of the country, and I was going to ask us to do it, so, thank you.
Okay. Right. And who required us to do this?
We were, we are not required by anyone. It was a decision made by our superintendent that we should be proactive in doing this. So to super, to answer your question...
I just wanted to say that. Well, I mean, it's, and the reason we did this was for the safety of our children and our staff.
To ensure their safety.
And so, not concerned whether, if it were to come back bad, we would have been able to fix it. And I think that's a wonderful thing that we did, and it's this sort of thing that make us such a great system. Thank you all for that. Mr. Hilton, Ms. Rafford. Okay.
Good evening, Chairman DiMaria and school board. One of the things that we will take action on today, tonight, is the superintendent's annual goals, which are the goals of the board that the superintendent is expected to fulfill and carry the, carry the division through the process. How do I click it?
Clicker.
Hold on a second.
You write.
I'm sorry. Over here.
Use that, or you can page down here.
Got it. Oops.
So we will not be evaluating you on...
I know, that's very good. Before, whenever we...
That's called T-Sig.
You may want to just see that.
I don't want to.
Okay.
That's your department.
So, excuse me with this. So in the areas of student achievement, we have, we have our goals in student achievement and accountability to increase the achievement for all students and close the achievement gap in student services, establish a culture of safety, respect, and responsibility in all schools to enhance the learning environment. Under technology, implement additional security measures to strengthen the protection of student and employee data, computer systems, and M C P S technology assets. Communication, improve the communication with internal and external stakeholders to strengthen community and business engagement and promote student achievement. And finally, under human resources, improve employee performance and develop, and develop to support student achievement. Okay, so what I will do is go through the, in our last board meeting, there were recommended, recommended changes and additions to the goals. So what I will do is run through these goals as they are and then highlight where the changes were. Changes were over last year, and this was decided upon before the last meeting was that at, all schools are fully accredited, student achieve, for student achievement. This is standard seven, and standard seven is for all employees of the school division in every school division of the state of Virginia, including all superintendents. And it has to do with how, how students overall succeed in a school, in a school division. So at the exemplary model, at a minimum, all seven schools are accredited, and for proficient, six of eight schools are accredited. And then for needs improvement, four to five schools are fully accredited, unacceptable, zero to three schools are fully accredited. The change in our, in our indicators of success, reading achievement will increase to a minimum of 75 percent. 75 percent is the state standard, and so that will be an increase of about three percentage points based on this year's performance. One thing that the school board has mentioned probably the last three years is a continued focus on the reading achievement in gap groups one and two will increase by five percentage points. The gap groups one and two, that terminology will be, will be changing as every, let's see, as ESSA comes in, comes into effect, which is replacing No Child Left Behind, and ESSA stands for Every Student, the Every Student Succeeds Act. So the only change that was made in the, in our last meeting was of the minimum 75 percent. All other standards, which, all other indicators were already in place. So the gap groups one and two, which includes ESOL students, special ed students, and students, special ed, ESOL, and economically disadvantaged, I'm sorry. And then reading achievement will, will increase in kindergarten, and this is our P A L scores that we do in kindergarten and first grade with a three-point increase in both areas. So our next, the next area is student services. Our indicators of success was that we will implement P B I S in all schools with fidelity to enhance the climate and reduce the recidivism rate, or effect, rate of repeat offenders. Implement P B I S Expect Results Bully Prevention Program with a fidelity in all schools to reduce incidences of bullying as measured by student climate survey results. Incorporate the behavior in the, in response to intervention framework and develop interventions that are consistently applied and monitored as measured by the students who enter and exit the R T I processes Tier Two and Three. Develop a division intervention protocol to decrease student absences and tardies to be implemented and monitored by principals and school attendance officers as reported through Power School. Provide P B I S information by way of the division website and a minimum of two parent information sessions provided by schools. And finally, provide a minimum of three division-wide opportunities for parents to attend events focusing on social, emotional development, health through Safe Schools Advisory Council. Now, the board recommended three, where in our last board meeting, we presented with two. You also requested that the tardies be added, that we look at the recidivism rate of children that are repeat offenders, and would, again, with that request that we work with, within the P B I S to, to lower that rate, and also to measure the tari, and the student tardies and absences. Under technology was to implement additional security measures to strengthen the protection and student data, computer systems, and M C P S technology assets. We will launch a K-12 digital citizenship curriculum with internet safety for students. We're going to, we're going to be working on with policies and regulations. We'll also be looking at security-focused articles that we will be using in our quarterly newsletters to staff. We're going to implement integrated authentication foundation for enterprise applications such as the students, student information system and the M C P S website. Develop and test roadmaps for network security measures, upgrade the internet content filtering, include data privacy review and findings and project assessments and new initiatives, and complete the framework for disaster recovery and business community continuity. A lot of this has, if you were to ask me right now what all that means, I couldn't explain all that to you. But we have become such a force in the area of technology, and all of our students are utilizing technology as a resource in their learning, so it's very, very important, and the board stressed this as well, that as we expand technology, we have to expand security, and we need to make sure that our staff and our students are trained in that area. And so that this will be the year of security, where we ensure that everybody understands what we're doing and that, and how to use the, and make sure that we're using everything the way we need to, as well as protecting all of our information. And then in communication, train principals in the Let's Talk platform. Right now, it's all handled through the central office, and we forward information and conversations, and they will become, in phase three, they become the person that's in charge of their own communication. We're going to do, we've, we've really listened to the community and parents about trying to, when we, when we have events going on, making sure that everyone knows about those events. So we'll have a project planning protocol for, for schools in how they communicate these events and so that we're more, everybody, we're more consistent among the eight schools, and we all know what's taking place and when it's taking place so that our community can be involved. We'll be providing professional development for effective communication and protocols at the school level, surveying, we're going to also survey our school community to find out if everything that we're doing is really what they want to see and what they're utilizing. And we will be launching an updated website. Now, this, under 4.5, this current website that we're, the software that we're using for this website, the own, the company that owns it has purchased another company, and so they are no longer supporting our website, and it's the software. So we will be changing, as all other divisions across the United States have had to do as a result of this buyout. And under human resources, we've already started our work here. We're going to implement the STAR, which is Specific Timely Authentic Recognition Program for Employee Recognition. We are going to expand our training and culture diversity and customer service to include staff that didn't, we're not able to participate in our initial implementation. One of the things that I'm very excited about is expanding our substitute program. They are part of our school system, they are our employees. So we're going to expand our professional development to include, our substitute professional development to include more, we already do student discipline, but this will be deeper and more at the level what we offer our, offer all of our teachers, so they'll have multiple opportunities, safety in our schools and instructional technology. We plan to produce a substitute quarterly newsletter, enhance the presence of the substitutes on our website, and implement a substitute recognition program. We're also going to expand our recruitment to additional college campuses in Pennsylvania. Throughout Virginia, where there is a teacher shortage and wherever we, Pennsylvania has the most teacher, teacher colleges, probably, as a state across the United States, everybody goes to Pennsylvania, and we're going to expand our, to other campuses. Finally, we're going to conduct an employee engagement survey that's used to measure employee engage, employee engagement, identify strengths, uncover obstacles to engagement, under, help them understand, work to understand differences among employee groups, and benchmark against other school districts nationwide, also in Virginia. Also in Virginia, last year Fairfax County conducted the same employee engagement survey, and I think it's very powerful when we can do, do a survey and then compare ourselves to not only Northern Virginia, but they, there are some other Virginia divisions that have conducted the same survey and then across the nation. And K-12 Insight will help us with this. So one of the things that I wanted to speak to the board about, and you have in front of you, is the area that had to do with student achievement. Under student achievement, where we have gap groups one and two, last, last week, the state superintendent sent out, sent out, we were notified through the Department of Education that they were going to do away with the VGLA testing. And under the VGLA testing, what that means is that students, every year, our students who are in ESOL take an access test. And the access test determines if they're levels one through six. When they hit level six, they are exited for the, from the program, and we monitor them for two years. When children are at X, are at levels one, two, and up to 3.3, well, actually 3.5 at the upper grades, when they, when they get to 3.5, they, they are required to take the SOL. Prior to that, they take a VGLA. And that, what that test is, it's a reading test, and they work on that portfolio all year long. So we, the teacher looks at the standards, and they take, they take sample, take samples of student work all along, and at the end of the year, they measure those samples against the standards to determine whether the student has been successful or not. And then all of those, then the state requires, looks at some sample portfolios, and they rate us whether we have passed or failed on those, on those items. So what has happened now is that the state is saying that they're going to do away with the VGLA. They are saying that the ESA Act no longer allows us to give the VGLA. And with that means that students that do not, that are new to our country, that come in and they do not speak any English whatsoever, will not, when it comes time for SOL testing, they will put the English, English language test on their desk. The students have the opportunity to try the first five questions. If they do not, if they do not attempt, and they're not able to do the first five questions, the test is removed from them. It's, it's kind of hard, because any teacher that did that to any of our students, the community, fellow teachers, administrators, school board, everyone would never do that to a child, because a student is sitting there and you knowingly put something in front of them that they can't read. It's similar that if we were in another country and our child was attending that school, and they plopped something down in front of them and said, "Do it," it's frightening. The students aren't going to understand that, it doesn't make sense. Well, right now, the state is talking with the, with the federal Department of Education. And we're not, they're not making great strides. Next year is a benchmark year. And the state wishes to do away with the VGLA. It's not required to do away with the VGLA till 2018, but they want to do it in 2017 so that they can go ahead and have their benchmark year. It will mean, it will, it will mean something great for us. And you have in front of you a letter from Scott Kinsner with Harrisburg City Schools and myself. Our two school districts have the most ESOL students. And whenever there's something with ESOL, we're the two superintendents that the Department of Education will contact. In fact, they, they contacted us when they knew this was going to be happening. So if you take a school, let's say you have Dean, and Dean had 16 passes, passes, passes in third grade. Those 16 students will take the SOL. And students really can't read English until they get to access level 3.5. That's when they start understanding and seeing some success. And probably if they took an English reading test at that point, they would read the low grade level, but they could read parts of their test. Those 16 students would have been a failure this year. So when you look at the, at their test result, their score results, which at this point was a 64, and you take away 16, that's the results that it will have for Dean in third grade. Our kids take the VGLA through eighth grade. So there will be, it will be very difficult for our students that, can you imagine when you're learning English in middle school, in Mayfield in middle school? The content at that point, the average child's content, when they read a science or social studies book in the middle grades, is about two grade levels above, because the content is so difficult to understand. And now the kids, without the help of VGLA, they will also be taking the same test. We have, we have, while, two, three weeks ago, Scott and I had personal conversation with Dr. Staples at the Department of Education. We were both on vacation at that time when we heard it, so he was in California and I was in North Carolina. But it was that important to us, we stopped everything and had that conversation. And then we requested for them to have another conversation with all superintendents in the state of Virginia, and that took place last week. What we are asking the state to do is to hold on. First of all, we don't know what the official word, wording from the federal government is of ESA, the ESA Act, because we have not heard, we don't, that won't come out until October or November. And we have told them that it's okay with us to have our scores dip in 2018 if that's what happens, if the test really has to go away. But in jumping the gun, just because we, we feel like we're not going to be able to do it, and it's not going to happen, there will be little effect to the state of Virginia. There will be great effect from Manassas City Public Schools. But not only that, it's a huge tremendous effect with our students. And I'm very passionate about how we prepare our children to learn. And people talk about self-esteem, and self-esteem is important because it's the power to stay known, to advocate for yourself. But learning esteem is the ability for a child to truly have confidence in their ability that I can do this, I can learn it, even though it's hard. And I, I am profoundly concerned where the direction of this is going. Like I said, you've got a copy of the letter that was, that was sent to the Department of Education, and at this point, we're kind, we're in a holding pattern in hopes that we will receive one more year of VGLA. It will provide us another year of to figure out what can we do to continue giving suggestions to the federal government as to, is this possible? Is this possible? Instead of using one little singular period of time to make that decision. So I go back up to what our goals are, and I still feel that our goals need to remain the same, because it's about our students. Gap group one and two won't be called gap group anymore. They're, I think they're going to be called achievement groups or something like that. All of that, it, what's relevant in all of that are students. Behind all of these name, gap groups, or whatever we call them, are children. And in Manassas City Public Schools, we teach every child, and we offer them equal opportunity in resources, knowledge, information, access to support. And we will continue to do that, but I did need to give you this update, because we have intentions of taking our school system far, and right now, we've had a, we've got a bump in the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on right there. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. McGorick? Sir?
I, I do, because we certainly can't control the state. But as Dr. McGorick was speaking, it reminded me, the first SOL is until grade three, and yet our goal four talks about reading for kindergartners and first graders. It's that early childhood reading that really matters. We've got to get kids by second grade, at the end of second grade, up to 95, 98 percent, something like that. So we started with goal 1.4, but I don't think we've gone far enough, because whether the state takes an action or not, the number of children who are coming into the country at various levels, it's really about their coming to us, and we've got to get them reading at grade level by the time they're in third grade. That's, that's really where the rubber's going to hit the road, and we haven't quite addressed that in these goals.
Now, where we are, we are, research says it takes six years, and we're right now doing it in four.
I know.
We want to take it to three, and we've done that through our pre-K program. And the more that the board continues to allow us to expand the pre-K program, and it may be that we start expanding it when the state's not funding it, is how, you know, when we look at our, at our pre-K program itself, or even our kindergarten classrooms, in our kindergarten classrooms, we're looking at about 80% of our students who are learning to speak English. So pre-K gives us that extra foundation, so they're not so startled into this new world. They have another year. So the board has acted in that behalf by the expansion, by footsteps to brilliance. We're working with parents and teaching them how to work with their children, and they can work with them in, in their native language of Spanish or English. You know, we're getting there, but you are correct, Mr. Albrecht. It's something that we have to focus upon. We've hired, we have more ESOS to teachers. Our student teacher ratio for ESOL to, to stu, for ESOL teachers to students is probably the lowest in the state, and we already fund, fund far more than we are, we are funded by the state. And I think that's why we do, why we make that four-year gain like we do.
Mr. Bushnell, do you have something?
I had a couple of things. I think your comments on footsteps to brilliance and expanding the blended program that allows students to, to not be in the classroom all day, I think that's exactly where we need to concentrate. If, if we can accelerate the learning and the reading of children at the earliest levels, it, it has an impact on the learning that takes place in, subsequently. So I would wonder if it might be possible to look at where we are now and see if we have any possibility to even add more to the, the number of kids who are eligible this year or next year. And I know we have four-year-olds who are eligible and still are not part of the program. I would encourage us to find ways to get more of those kids into our classrooms at least a little bit, and into footsteps to brilliance a lot, because that's the biggest impact we can have, I think, on learning and on reading. That, that's my educational perspective. My parent perspective, my government, government's perspective is, this is the second time that something like this has happened to our children. The first time, it was the federal government who took away exemptions and to require students to take tests that they knew they would fail. And at the time, as a parent, I was touched by, if, if someone had required my kids to sit in a classroom with a number of other children, and had said, "We're going to give you a test that we know you're going to fail, and we're going to make you cry because you can't take this test," I would have been up in arms as a parent. And we have to advocate for these kids. We have to stand up and say, "This is wrong. It's wrong to require our kids to fail, to give them a test knowing they're going to fail, not because they're not smart." It's that same idiotic side of the educational community that wants to lump English as second language students together with special education students, because that makes sense to people somehow. Doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense to do anything that exposes our kids to embarrassment and failure. And if any one of you, as a parent, knew that your kids were going to be required to take a test, that they were going to fail, you would say, "Wait a minute, I don't want that for my kid." We have to say that for these kids. So I applaud your letter, and I think we need to say something back to the state as a board as well, because the short notice here, major impact for us, but it's not the results for us, it's what it does for the kid. What it does for the kid who comes in and is given a test, and after five questions is told, "Sorry, you failed," and, and it holds them up to ridicule and embarrassment in front of their peers. And it, it's as unacceptable and unconscionable for the state to do it as it was for the federal government to do it, what, six years ago? Anyway, editorial comment, but if, as a parent, you would not want your kids to be exposed to this. As a parent, you would not want your kids to be required to fail because they didn't speak a language. It doesn't mean they're not smart, it doesn't mean they don't know the facts. We're just not giving them an avenue to, to really find out how much they know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ladies? Nope?
Okay, thank you, Dr. McGorick.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thinking is due in Mr. Bushnell's passionate comments. What are the board's thoughts of Dr. McGorick sharing her letter with Doug Miller and Senator McPike, for instance?
I think that would be a fine idea. I, I'd like for them to advocate for our children as well.
I, I'm sure they will, I'm just wondering if they know of the potential impacts, and I certainly will call VSBA tomorrow and start some conversations there as well, from a legislative position.
Then I could also forward it to our federal representatives as well.
Right. Because it comes from them to deal with.
Okay.
So yeah, if you could do that to all of our representatives, we'd appreciate that.
Eric?
And getting back to what Mr. Bushnell said, you're absolutely right in everything you said. You used the word, "It would be frightening for them to have that," frightening and demeaning. And that kind of thing's going to stick with, with our kids, and we can't let that happen. So you're absolutely right.
Last time, last time this happened, we had kids in classrooms who were sitting in tears because they were failed.
Right. And you don't get over that. And we don't need to do that to our kids. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. McGorick.
All right. Yes, it is. Just stand there and look good for a moment, if you don't mind, or you can sit and look good. You're handling that quite well. On the superintendent's goals, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the city of Manassas adopt the superintendent's 2016, 2017 goals as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the superintendent's 2016, 2017 evaluation goals as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five, nothing. Ms. Miller, thank you very much for keeping me straight. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Now, we will do administrative fee. Dr. Stone.
I don't want to draw.
So, so well out of the corner of your mouth. I don't want to be right there.
I'll put this right over there. So Chairman DiMaria, members of the board, Dr. McGorick. Tonight, I'm here to share a couple of things about our student transfers. Typically, you would see this on your consent agenda. We do have parents who apply to transfer to other students at our K-4 level. We also have folks who make requests to come to the division, and they pay tuition for the student to come. And we have employees who bring their children to our division through an administrative fee process if they do not live within the city limits. So the two things we're discussing tonight are, firstly, approval of student transfer requests K-4, and second, the approval of our 1617 student administrative fee. So the reason I'm here to share this with you tonight, and it is not on the consent agenda, is back in the spring, you approved a redistricting plan. So this is kind of our first year in benchmarking where all of the students will land and what kind of requests we will receive for transfers. As you can see on the first slide, in grades K through four, we have a total of 52 requests for transfer, and you can see them by grade level. It's broken down in multiple, multiple categories there. The key to this, as we move forward, we're going to discuss the impact of these transfers at each school. You're going to be looking at a current enrollment number. That current enrollment number is a snapshot in time, and it is the enrollment That current enrollment number is a snapshot in time and it is the enrollment as of today. As you know, enrolling in schools is a very fluid process. We have people enrolling and withdrawing every day sometimes. And we really take a hard look at where we are after our first ten days of enrollment. That gives us a clear picture of who actually showed up, who needs to be withdrawn, and then we kind of move forward from there with decisions. So, as we move forward, school by school, this is our snapshot in time right now. If you look at Baldwin, the transfers, we had twelve students requesting to go to another school. We had eight students requesting to come into Baldwin. And if you look at their current, the max enrollment that they can take in each grade level, their current enrollment, and then their enrollment when you include all the transfers, there's no need for additional staff at Baldwin at this time. If we move to Dean, again, at the bottom, you can see that seven students requested another school, five students requested to come to Dean, and when you look at all of their numbers, there's no need for additional staff at Dean at this time. Moving on to Hayden, six students requested another school, twelve students requested to come to Hayden. Looking at their enrollment currently at the second grade level, there is a possibility that they would need another staff member as they are two students over their max enrollment. They have one additional student at that grade level who is requested to transfer in. Again, this is current enrollment as of today. Those numbers will change as we move forward. When we look at Round, there is no need for additional staff. You have eight students requesting to go to another school, twelve students requesting to come to Round, and currently, they are within their max enrollment numbers. And then we look at Williams. Three students have requested another school, fifteen students have requested to come to Williams, and our current enrollment there kind of indicates that we will need a kindergarten teacher. A couple of things to be mindful of, again, this is current enrollment as of today. It is a fluid situation. We do have one elementary teacher in contingency should we need them, but also, we really take a hard look after the ten days of enrollment. We look across the division to look and see if there are places where we had a lot of students not show up and perhaps we don't need as many teachers in that grade level to meet our enrollment requirements. We can move teachers, as we have in the past, transfer teachers from one school to another school, or even within the same school, they may move grade levels to facilitate making sure we have, we meet the class size requirements. So, kind of as a summary of the things here, additional staff in classrooms needed currently. At Hayden, we are watching that second grade classroom section. At Williams, kindergarten is a concern. Do they have space if they do indeed need additional teachers? They do, within their school building at this time. And as you can see on the, with the transfer piece, there are no additional staff or classrooms needed if you were to approve all of their transfers. So, the second piece we're talking about tonight and looking for your consideration, the policy for students who are non-residents, and these are students whose parents or guardians are full-time or part-time employees of both Manassas City Public Schools and Manassas City. They are entitled to the full benefits package available to school division, employees of the school division or Manassas City, and they may enroll their children in Manassas City Public Schools per an administrative fee. The administrative fee is approved annually by the school board. So, this evening, we are talking a little bit about that. Our teachers do have a benefit package, but we all would agree they work very hard. They spend a lot of hours in their classrooms or in their schools, coming to events, doing things after school for kids, a lot of times doing things before school for kids. It's very beneficial if they can bring their students with them so they are not trying to run home to pick up students or run to another division to go to events. They're able to do a lot more if they have that comfort and security of their child being with them in their school. Currently, last year's fee for bringing students here was three hundred dollars for the first child and a hundred dollars for each additional child. We have nineteen requests from our employees to bring their students to Manassas City. And what we are, the total amount for these nineteen requests is going to be forty-seven hundred dollars if we use a current administrative fee. What we are requesting this evening is that you waive the administrative fee or make it zero. Financially, the forty-seven hundred dollars is not going to impact us in any way that would be destructive or harmful to the program we provide to students, and it would be a benefit to our teachers to be able to do that without cost.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, there's two, two separate actions, sir, so.
Right. They are separated. They are separated.
So, which would we like to do first? We could have discussion in maybe.
Well, let's make a motion on the administrative fees, as long as that's, we've got that under B.
Let's do it the other way around because the transfer numbers could impact how we feel about the transfer, about the fees, I think.
Okay. I don't think it really matters, so if that's what you want to do, it won't hurt my feelings at all. Find the second one?
Yes. I have a question about the transfers while we're looking for them.
So, Mr. Chair.
Sir.
I would move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the, all of the student.
No, we've got to do it the other way around.
Yeah, you've got to do it the other way around. That's right. Just the way this motion is and the way we're going to do it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. We listened to it.
I'd like to actually make that motion.
Which one?
The, the waiving of the fees.
Here.
And I'd like to make it because I'm not running for office. Put anybody in a bad position one way or the other.
So, as a publicant, I'd like since the, our policy says we'll establish a fee. I think we're establishing a fee of zero for the sixteen, seventeen school year.
That's what he's going to motion there, right?
That's not what it says.
It's a, it's a administrative fee of zero.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sir.
Do we want to make it zero or do you want to say that we waive the fee for?
Let's make it zero because we said we'd set a fee. So, we'd set our fee at zero. Well, let's make that motion.
But this isn't, this isn't correct then because we're only waiving, we're only making it zero for our employee students. There is still a fee for others.
Not of a transfer. That would be a tuition.
The only fee that exists is the one for those that come from outside the school system.
And that's in a different place?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I would move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the administrative fee in the amount of zero dollars for the coming school year.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion? Sir.
I just want to get after, Mrs. Stone, Dr. Stone said some things about the data and, and your data talked about employees and non-employees. In fact, employees can be taxpayers, they can be non-t taxpayers, and non-employees can be taxpayers and not be employees. So, the, the data's kind of, you know, we're dealing fruit salad here. When we really set this up several years ago and talked about this, the motivation of this board was that the children or the students coming from teachers, there'd be a mutual benefit from that. The students, we would hope, would serve as good role models in the classroom. The teachers, as parents, would be more engaged and they will be role models in the classroom and within the educational environment. And subtly, there's a great publicity statement here about, "I may not live in the city, but I work here and I send my children here and this is a great system." So, there's an incredible benefit to us in this, well above what we're just talking about.
Way above that change we're talking about.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
I, I think there's an incredible benefit to us. I think there's also a benefit to the teacher. The teacher who is able to have their, if they don't live in the city, they're able to have their student in the same building with them. They don't have to worry about going back and forth. And that's kind of a secondary benefit that I don't think we considered when we, when we initially did this. When we initially did this, we thought, "Well, there's a benefit to, to us, there's a benefit to the, the teacher, there's a benefit to the student." You know, it's, it's a win-win for everyone. But, but I think that, that times have changed a little bit and that since we first did this, concerns about safety, concerns about activities, you know, increased travel time, all of those things, there's a peace of mind factor here for, for our teachers. And I think it values our teachers and their children as part of our educational community. And I think that this is a, this is a very positive impact in our classrooms and positive impact for our teachers, positive impact for us. So, but, but I also think that we need to make sure that we let the teachers know that we're doing this because we value them. You know, this is a summer meeting that sometimes doesn't get as much attention. So, I think it's important that we let all of our teachers know that we're setting this B at zero because we value them and because we value their children as part of our family.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the administrative fee in the amount of zero dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five, zero. And now, we'll move on to student transfers.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve all of the transfers, internal administrative and tuition requests as presented.
And I have a couple, I'll second that, but I have a couple of questions about the.
I figured there'd be a lot of them. Mr. Bushnell.
So, of the fifty-two transfers, how many of them were previous transfers? How many of them have transferred previously and this isn't their first rodeo?
So, there are five that were previous transfers.
It was on the chart.
We have a, can you pull that up?
Yeah.
The smelling.
But I think it was lost in the data as you talk about it.
It's not that.
But it's a subtle point.
It's that attached with those three, there we go. That's administrative fee, the.
No.
There we go. Yes, there we go.
There you go.
So, there are five that were.
You have roughly twenty-three when you look at tuition students, administrative fee students and transfer students who were previously in our division.
Okay. So, about forty-five percent, something like that, about, almost.
And some of the requests are coming because those previous requests now have kindergarten siblings that want to come along with them.
Okay. And then the, the second thing that, that occurs to me, do we know that we have all of the requests? Do we anticipate, well, we can't possibly because if we hire somebody as a new teacher, they might have students. You know, if, if there's a teacher who's not yet hired and they want to do this, how, what is, what is your proposal for how we handle people who subsequently apply?
So, we do have a timeframe typically for accepting transfers and with the exception of new teachers coming in and requesting this kind of transfer request. Typically, these are our numbers. I'm going to suggest that we wait and look at our ten-day enrollment. Again, as we go through the process, new teachers, we probably, about how many new teachers are we looking for right now? So, we're looking at about twenty-five new teachers. I think you kind of have to look at them as they come in. We know we have some spaces left at this point. We know, again, this is that whole fluid environment. Tomorrow, we could have ten kids withdraw and they're moving to different states, they're moving to different places. Those spaces are going to open up. We can move them in there. You kind of consider them as you get them, but typically, this is the bulk of your requests.
And I only ask that because as a board, it seems to me that, that we've just taken a position that, that this is an important benefit, taken a position that we want these kids to be here. It becomes a little tougher if we hire somebody and then have to say, "We've accepted all of these other families, but we don't have room for yours." And I, I think that's something we need to think about going forward. Out of the twenty-five students who were, out of the twenty-five teachers who remain to be hired, you know, there may be one or two of those who have some students. And when we consider them on a case-by-case basis, I would just encourage us all to remember that we just said we really value those, those students. It would be tough for me to say no to one student when we've just accepted all of these others.
Mr. Albrecht, do you have anything?
No, we've kind of.
But I'm going to say something.
Yeah, it's me. I can't help myself.
I know, Pam. Go ahead.
We just looked at some of the data and, you know, as we look at it, to Mr. Bushnell's point, we have the transfers every year. About half of these transfers are ones that are being done on an existing basis for childcare reasons, we would assume. You know, we don't know this, every one of these is a story in and of itself, but you could logically deduce that and that will continue. Some of them are current employees who want to continue to bring their children, some could be new children, new that want to continue to bring their children because there's no guarantee of that going in perpetuity. It is an annual request. And you're right, Mr. Bushnell, we could hire a new staff member and they could want to do it and new people will, will move into the city and will cause us stress. We, we do live in a dynamic environment. We'll see where we are on the tenth of September. It's why we've got some contingency in the budget and it's what I know causes the superintendent and staff challenges every year about this time because children don't come in nice even packages in accordance with whatever the SOQ is for their grade level. They come in ones and somehow, they just always seem to go to the school. They can't take one more at that grade level. It just never seems to fail, so.
Uh, thank you, sir. Couple of things about the numbers on the requests. Williams being a little bit of a outlier, it's nice to see that we have requests in and out of every school. Nobody's trying to get away from anything. They're trying to keep their kids together or stay in the school they've been in or with a babysitter or something. Nobody's trying to leave our schools and I think that's a wonderful thing. And Williams, the outlier is Williams because people want to go in there. Nobody wants to get away from the school they're in. There's a, there's a better reason for them wanting to leave and I think that's a wonderful thing.
Could I, could I just point out?
Yes, you may.
Planning on me not being here to raise these questions in the future, I just want to encourage you all to make sure that you continue to look at that piece of data because the reason that we started to, to have this policy, the reason that we set the requirements was because there was a time many years ago when there was flight from one particular school.
Yes, sir.
And we need to make certain that that never happens in this school system. It's wonderful to see that the numbers come in and out and that they, there are requests to go to every school. That's, that's wonderful, but it is also the failsafe mechanism for this board to, in looking at this data each year, to make sure that you don't allow people to leave one particular school.
Right.
So, make sure that you keep looking at those numbers.
Well, I think we've taken care of that already and we will continue to by the quality of all five of our elementary schools. I don't think we're going to have to worry about that because I, I don't think anybody wants to leave any of our schools for that reason. And I think, you know, you and the rest of the board have done a wonderful job eliminating that possibility.
But I think at the time, people tried to leave one particular school, it wasn't because of anything that was happening, it was because of rumor and.
Right.
And sometimes rumor gets out of control.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Yeah. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, a second by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve all transfers, internal administrative fee and tuition requests. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five, zero. Thank you, Dr. Stone. Am I done? Mr. Williams?
Let's talk.
No, I'm letting you do this.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the city of Manassas school board adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries five, zero. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for being here.